Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate you all being here. I have to inform you that we had an executive session prior to this public meeting discussing legal matters and personnel matters. We're going to need a roll call.
Mr. Hauser, yes, then? Mrs. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Macasio?
Here.
Mrs. May?
Here.
Mr. McCollum? Mr. Mead?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mrs. Sarat?
Here.
And Dr. George?
Here. We're going to be hearing the visitors, part one, but before I do that, I'm going to read my quotation for the evening. This is from Steve Jobs, who was the founder of Apple. He said, and this is pretty profound, actually, if you think about it. It really pretends to just about anything anyone ever does. Says, "Everyone here has a sense that right now is one of those moments when we are influencing the future." So just think about that for a minute. Everything we do impacts the future. And we're here to impact the future for the good of our students and community. Hearing visitors, part one, is for anyone in the audience to address the board. We ask that you state your name, limit your time to five minutes, or less, on any item on the agenda. At the end of the meeting, we'll be hearing visitors, part two, where you can talk about any other concern that you might have. Do you have anybody on the audience who requests to speak to the board? Seeing no one, we will go to solicitor's report, Mr. Naples.
I recommend that you move on to resolution 191, approving a student discipline act number three of the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
If you have a motion, it's consecrated. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all voters in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The votes? Passes? I have nothing further, I'm going to go with Mr. President. Thank you. Let's play a report, Dr. Pepper.
Yes, I just wanted to report out that we have, there are over 100 school districts that Board of Educations have voted and approved for the signed charter of school reform, and that continues to grow. So I just wanted to report out on the numbers.
Thank you. Education, Friday, Mrs. Mayes?
Yes, thank you. We'll begin with the student reports from the senior and junior.
Hello. In the junior high, a career speaker from the military spoke to students about career choices this past week. Also, parent-teacher conferences took place on Thursday, March 5th. The junior high musical, Willy Wonka Junior, will be held on the weekend of March 27th, so make sure to come out and enjoy their fun production if you can. The senior high musical, Mamma Mia!, will be running in the auditorium on Friday, March 13th at 7:30 p.m., Saturday, March 14th at 7:30 p.m., and Sunday, the 15th at 1:30 p.m. Get your tickets before it's too late. The student council will be holding their annual senior citizens breakfast on Thursday, where attendees can enjoy breakfast served by the council members, followed by a preview of the musical Mamma Mia! in the auditorium next year. And finally, March's Breakfast of Champions will occur on Thursday, the 19th, at 7:30 a.m. in the CSC. In addition, there will be a Greater Litchell Next Career Summit on Friday, March 27th, from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. And this is where our 50 speakers representing all five career pathways in the Greater Litchell Next program will speak to our students, as well as keynote speaker Matt Scaletti, who will be also joining us to speak.
At the elementary schools, LES will be hosting the Scholastic Book Fair for students to buy books and other small school supplies from March 16th to the 20th. In addition, LES will also be hosting a family fun night on March 20th from 6 o'clock to 8:30. Moving on to Bagley, students from the child development classes up here at the high school will be coming to visit classrooms at the elementary school on March 11th. As you might recall, last month, I talked about the Rock and Greet contest that the school was having. Will thus come to an end, and a number of students will be going to lunch by limo during the school day as they're awarded for the top prize level of the contest. Bagley will also be hosting a Spring Bowl concert on March 31st at 7:30. In Mountview, third grade students will be showing off what they've been working so hard on in music class as part of the annual reporter concert on March 26th at 2:00. Mountview will also be having the book fair running from March 20th to April 6th. Finally, at all the elementary schools, the third grade art symposium is being held from March 9th to the 12th. Also, on March 12th, there will be a family fun night for incoming kindergarten students, starting at 4:30. Each school is doing a different activity, so Mountview's having the kindergarteners wear their favorite outfits and sunglasses, LES is having an ice cream party, and Bagley's doing a story hour. The theater sports show will be visiting the elementary schools as well. The show will start off at Bagley on April 1st, LES on the 2nd, and Mountview on the 3rd. Also, the girls' armory run has begun. It's an opportunity for elementary-age girls to play games while talking about things that are important to them, like friendships, goal-setting, and what makes each of them unique. At the end of the season, they will get to complete a 5K with their coaches and teammates. We're also approaching the end of the third quarter, so all students in the elementary schools and senior junior high will have a two-hour lead starting on March 23rd. So it looks like I'm getting an extra two hours of sleep. That's all.
Thank you for allowing me to say this. Late turn of the clock, we have the WCTC student of the month, Professor Paul Miss Mayes, to introduce her.
Sure. Thank you, good evening. I'm going to ask Isabel and her mom to come on up to the podium. Isabel's a senior at the high school, and knowing Isabel well, I can see why she's the CTC student of the month. When I look at her course schedule, she's taking three different AP courses, which is rare to see a student challenging themselves that much to go off to the CTC building. So inside our building, she's compassionate, kind, and one of the hardest-working students that we have in the building. At CTC, I'm going to ask her mom, Mrs. Kager, who is also a school counselor at CTC, to talk about the program that she's in there, and a little bit about Isabel. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having her tonight. It's an honor to be here at the school meeting at Late-Tro. Isabel, I'm going to try to talk to her like I talk about her, as she's not my daughter. She's been dancing since she was three, and she currently is a competitive dancer at Seton Point University. She obviously had the privilege of running around the CTC for 18 years that I've been there, so she can walk. So she kind of fell in love with machining, I think probably back in sixth grade. Always followed Mr. Petter around, who's been a total inspiration to her as she's pursuing her degree in her field of mechanical engineering. She was, for four years, I believe she was a teaching assistant for the Young Engineers Camp. She started the CTC in 10th grade. She's our senior class president, and she's a member of NHS here. She was awarded Breakfast of Champions at Great Late-Tro. She is secretary of Skills USA. She recently beat all the boys, I'm just going to say, year after year, in the competition in machining for districts in-house competition, and then she also won in districts in-house. As long as everything goes all right, let's all keep our fingers crossed that nothing happens with the state. But in April, she's supposed to attend the state competition, and then hopefully nationals, as long as nothing gets canceled, of course. She also has R and four certifications, and she's an advanced completer, the only senior right now that's completed all of the certifications for her NIMS. She also has her Kennet Metal certifications. She's currently working on the HAAS machine, which is one of the few, the only machine on this east part, the eastern part of the country, where she's going to be showcasing it at the BattleBots competition, hopefully districts in for states. And I think that's it, I think. So she'll be graduating, unfortunately, really soon. Mom's going to have a hard time with that. And she'll be heading off to Penn State Baron, where she'll study mechanical engineering.
I'm going to ask Isabel just to talk briefly about her experience at CTC and her future plans and goals.
Hi, everyone. So, like my mom and counselor said, it's so weird to say. I have been running around the school for, since I could walk. And I've had a unique experience with, I have a very close relationship with my teacher, and I absolutely love it there. I have a passion for school just because of it. I've gained so many opportunities, like skills, BattleBots, Kennet Metal trainings, national certifications. It's just an awesome opportunity that I've been able to go there for three years. Sad to see it end, but I'm excited for Penn State Baron, where I'll pursue mechanical engineering for the next four years. And then I'm working on getting a co-op opportunity with a local company, hopefully Stellar, or I think it's called Hamel. Yeah, that's, that's great. Congratulations.
They're forward, so proud of you. And we want to present you with a certificate of recognition for all your accomplishments. Keep up the good work, and we're going to hear great things about you in the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Isabel.
Thank you so much.
I can squash it when I was just going out here. They're all like that. Yeah, they're not being sent down. Their words just are correct, or all of them.
It's unbelievable that she has those state P classes. Christ, they had the high school only part-time.
Right, right.
I'm kind of like Dr. George, I'm kind of like his lackey.
They're so bright, they're so smart. Shame we can't use her as an ad for the TWC. Pardon? Shame we can't use her as an ad. God. I say that every time there's something here, they're telling them down there. They're like, you've got posters over for that school. Yeah. But, and that, she's, you know, out there, and she's student of the month wherever it is. But generally, line and order, they're all like, it's like a fine line, they're choosing these kids, it's like, yeah, a fine line, you can choose these kids.
Thanks.
Of course, we'll try to ask them off.
Thank you, don't forget. This week, I was given a book from Mrs. Felix's first-grade class at Bagley Elementary School, that they authored and illustrated. And the book is We Choose Love, and this is pertaining to our social-emotional learning curriculum that we have talked about from K to eighth grade. And I just think it's awesome, so I wanted to share it, and I will pass it around. But each student talks about the importance of showing love, and then has an illustrated picture to represent their writing. So it's pretty awesome, and I just wanted to share that, it's good stuff, so. Okay, I'll just pass it around.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Pepper. Enrollment report, Mr. Freud.
Kindergarten registration is in full swing, so I thought I would update you with those numbers. We currently have 167 incoming kindergarteners. We have 232 this year, so about 65 off of that pace, but I don't think it's anything to worry about. We'll definitely get to 232, I would think, if not beyond, at this point, looking at numbers. And it's pretty evenly balanced across the three elementary schools. Bagley and Mountview each have 54 kids enrolled, LES has 59. So that's where we sat as of 4:25 this afternoon. Again, if your child's five by August 15th, go to GLSD.us and enroll now, and give them a discount.
Thank you, Dr. Pepper. Special. Next week, we will have an educational program from the Greater Litchell Partners in Education, that will be next week at this time. And also on your agenda for next week will be a resolution to approve Westmore County Student Assistance Program for the 2021 school year. And also on your agenda for next week will be a resolution to approve the proposed 2020-2021 calendar. There is a copy of it attached, please take a look at it, if you have any questions, we can answer them quickly or by talk. We will also be approving tuition students for the 2021 school year, two listed, those from the general. The next curriculum committee meeting will be next Tuesday, March 17th, at 5:30 p.m. here in CSC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance, Mr. Hauser?
Thank you, Dr. George. On the agenda for your approval will be the treasurer's report, payment of bills. Also, on the agenda for your approval will be disposal, sale of property, which I know the media would like to emphasize this because it will certainly help us out. And those items are Dodge Ram Bam, weight room, weight machine, hammer strength incline press, blacksmith machine, dumbbell racks, decline bench, platforms, hack squat, and a tricep extension machine. I know how interested, I mean, how much interest the media could draw on that, I would appreciate it greatly. Also, on the agenda for your approval will be gifts, grants, and donations, as listed. Our next finance committee meeting will be Tuesday, April 7th, at the senior high school library at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you. The storage operations and finding, Mr. Palmer?
Hi, thank you, Dr. George. The facilities committee met this evening, and we have an update on the meeting practices as it relates to the coronavirus.
Yeah, just to share with you at your place, I have a memo describing our practices as they stand. We're obviously aware of the coronavirus and its cases that are occurring in the state of Pennsylvania, possibly moving across, preparing for that. Our daily routine doesn't really change, we do clean and disinfect daily, all of our surfaces, classrooms, with restrooms, and drinking fountains and those type of locations. During these times, much like the seasonal flu type period of the year, we do increase cleaning those high-touch surfaces, which are door handles, pushpads, handrails, those type of things throughout the school day. So not only do we clean those at night, we're also trying to hit those throughout the day because also being touched by students throughout the day. We continue to monitor it, all our procedures are based upon the CDC, Department of Health, best practices. We use an EPA-registered product to do our disinfectant. It's above the standard to sanitize, so it is a good product to use. And we're continuing to monitor the situation, and hopefully I don't have to respond to that pandemic-type state.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Also, the meeting minutes from March 5th are attached, and that's pretty much it. And our next meeting will be April 2nd, here at the Admiral, 3:30 p.m. Thank you, Dr. George.
Thank you. All right, give Dr. Pepper the chance here to update us on some other planning that's been going on regarding the potential for coronavirus.
Sure, I would just like to let everybody know that we have been monitoring this very closely. We've been in contact with the PA Department of Health, Pennsylvania Department of Education, as well as receiving numerous updates from the CDC. Administratively, we have been needing to discuss a worst-case scenario and a plan of action if we would be impacted in our community. And again, last resort, if we would have to react, and if we would have to close our schools. Within the next week, parents will be receiving some Global Connect messages, as well as emails, to update them about our plan and our layout and timeline for educating of students when, and if, and hopefully not, we would be educating from home and utilizing digital instruction. So those plans are ongoing, and again, we will be communicating that plan out here toward the end of the week and the upcoming week ahead, and we continue to closely monitor that.
Thank you. Student activities and recreation, Mr. Cassio?
Yes, I'm proud to announce that Vincent Kilkeri is our latest state champion in wrestling at 106 pounds.
Some years, anything you want to add on that, or?
No, we had a clue it out, and that's our fourth state champ in the history of the school district in wrestling. And being a freshman is very difficult to do, no matter what wing class you're doing, with all the emotions of the ninth grade, and at Bay Arena with all those fans. He wrestled a phenomenal tournament, and Gabe Willishe finished third. He was one point in the semifinals in overtime to go to the state finals, and possibly be a state champion also. So those two boys wrestle very well, and represent this quite well.
Wonderful. Mr. Cassio, Mr. Veris, just to mention about our hockey team that are in the semifinals tomorrow evening?
Yep. They will play at 7 o'clock at Robert Morris Memorial, in Hefield, in North Carolina. We've beaten them this year. So we feel that hopefully after that, next Monday, we will be at the Mario Lemieux Center up in Cranberry, playing for the Penguins Cup, the western side of the state championship. So hopefully Wednesday and Monday are big hockey meetings, of course, since the Penguins don't seem to want to win right now.
It'll take over.
Maybe later, we decide to take it over.
I think, did you, although you really did mention, I think it would be appropriate to mention that we have another former state, former coach, wrestling coach, who is going to be inducted into the Hall of Fame, and it's our third.
That's awesome, Mr. Mark Villett.
Mr. Mark Villett. We had, of course, Mr. Harvard, and we had first one.
Three.
Three. Yeah, three. Yeah, you were there, right?
Yeah.
He didn't even point me. But no, I think it should be noted that we should be very proud of our coaching history here, that we had three out of three coaching coaches put into the Hall of Fame. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you for sharing.
Our next athletic committee meeting will be next Monday. There's a time change here, it will be at 3:30 at the senior high school library classroom. And that's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Mayes, you've got the next two coming up, community relations and maybe Ethan?
Okay, thank you. The Late-Tro GLSC Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, minutes from February 16th, 2020, are attached. The next meeting will be held on Thursday, March 19th, at 4:30 p.m. in the Late-Tro Municipal Building. And also at your seats, we are required every year to do an annual report for awards. At your seats, you'll find the annual report. I think they do a very good job of it, so it's interesting for you to look it over. And moving on to Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, my first part of the, I'm sorry, on the agenda for next week will be a resolution to approve the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit general operating budget for July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. And a summary of the WIU board meeting, minutes from February 25th, are attached. The next WIU committee meeting, meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 14th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Portwood Theater.
Thank you. Joint operating committee, Mrs. Casar?
Yes, our last meeting was on the 26th, and there's an attachment with a summary of that meeting. And our next meeting will be Wednesday, 25th of March.
Thank you. Board policy, final adoption and approval of board policies listed below. These, we've already gone over, and they were reviewed the last couple of meetings. Then we have first readings of some other board policies. You have our organizational chart that we've talked about the last half of the year, I think, now.
Yes.
There's an attendance policy that's been updated. Tobacco policy has had vaping and jewel smoking added to that. Suspension expulsion was updated. The back and vaping price updated, professional development is updated, use of school facilities is updated. And just as a note, facility use policy was extensively evaluated last spring. We have a pretty extensive list of all that ones. That wasn't changed, but the policy has been updated. And public attendance at school events is also updated. Really, it's just updating policies that we already have in place, really no big changes except for the jewel vaping policy. Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Dr. George. I would ask the board to approve the Elio LLC, because of what posting service, posting services agreement, coming up for your vote next week. I think, if I'm correct, it ended up going, we used to deal with school wires and Blackboard before this, and we're moving on to another company, and it's net savings per year, $8,500 per year. So it goes along the way. I just can't, I didn't see, didn't read the attachment before you. How long has it been?
Just a little.
You see early? Okay. And thank you. Our technology committee meeting minutes from the 18th are attached, and our next meeting is April 21st, here at the CSC, 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Dr. George.
Thank you. Superintendent's recommendations, Dr. Pepper?
Yes, thank you. Next week, I will ask, be asking the board to approve some resignations. Richard Allman, our V and Director Assistant, Chad Kissel, our Boys Tennis Assistant Coach, and Catherine McCoskey, who is a special education teacher here at our senior high school for retirement purposes. Also, there will be some requests for professional personnel substitute teachers, Maureen Cassidy and Karen Egner. We are, I will also ask to approve a psychology intern for the 2021 school year, Nikki Grant, who is from California University of Pennsylvania, and will be working with Mrs. Philobish and Mr. Joe. And approve support personnel appointments of supplemental coaches, and there are some corrected and updated spring 2020 coaches and salaries, which are attached. I will also ask the board to amend the 2020 monthly board meeting schedule for the committee of the whole meeting. It is currently stated for April 7th, but to request the change for April 14th due to conflicts. And again, that would be April 14th for our committee of the whole meeting, followed by our voting meeting on April 21st.
So move, give a second. So should we make a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The votes? Motion passes.
Under our business, our students talk about the exciting Mamma Mia! coming this weekend here, and you can hear them, they sound so great, we needed to close the door, but we were tapping our feet, we had to close the door here, and they must have done that. So Friday and Saturday and Sunday for that. Breakfast of Champions, next Thursday, here at 7:30 a.m. in the Center for Student Creativity. In addition, as the students stated, just to reiterate, third quarter's right around the corner, March 20th, followed by that sleeping-in late start there for Jace Obardo, Monday, March 23rd. Our junior high musical will be Willy Wonka Junior, March 27th and 28th and 29th here at our senior high school auditorium. and 28th and 29th here at Senior High School Auditorium. In addition, Mr. Perunka had discussed about our kindergarten registration, but again, we encourage any parent or guardian with a student who will be five years old on August, as of August 15th, 2020, to make an appointment and to have your child registered. The dates for screening are March 30th and the 31st, April 1st through the 3rd, and April 6th. And those screenings are held here in the Center for Student Creativity. At your seats, it's not on the agenda, but there's an invitation also for a National Honor Society induction, which will occur April 7th in the auditorium. Board meetings, as noted, Tuesday, March 17th. Next week will be our voting meeting and committee of the whole. Tuesday, April 14th, as previously discussed, and our voting meeting April 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here are your visitors, part two. Is there anyone in the audience has anything to address the board about? Please state your name, address, and try to leave your comments for less than five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Todd Prister at Two to Four Cameron Road. I've got two things I wanna maybe discuss real fast. First off, I'd like to thank the board for approving the junior high boys volleyball team at the previous meeting. I personally had taken the trip, came on their first game this evening. We had two teams, and those teams did wonderful. They were in competition with Shaler and North Hills and a couple other teams, so they all did good. My son plays, along with Mr. Miras' son, played on the same team. Secondly, I saw on the agenda about the proposed school calendar, which apparently be voting on for next year, I mean, at the next meeting. I want to thank you guys for bucking the trend of not starting earlier, like the other schools are within the county. It's important for our area with our youth involved in 4H program with the Westmoreland Fair. We have about 100 or so youth within this regular triennial district who are involved in the fair, who use the fair as their yearly showcase of their projects that they carry on. Mrs. Kozar, Mr. Music, Mr. Miras are also involved in the fair in a way or another, so as like myself is. And the fair is coming to a very tough situation right now because of the trend of starting earlier. And the schools in the other parts of the county are starting earlier due to the central Russell and Vodtek starting the week of the fair. That's the issue with, happened with Mount Pleasant this year. The central start is starting the week of the fair. So that school had to adjust their schedule to accommodate most of the kids for the Vodtek school. The fair board itself, which I'm also superintendent of the fair, would like to start incorporating more education within the fair and reaching out to the public. And one way of thinking of it is to reach out to the schools that are starting earlier or who have in-service the week of the fair to invite people to the fair for education purposes. Dr. Pepper, last year, I understand, had a personal tour of the fair from Kara Leckler. I talked to her a month the other day. And according to Beth and Kara, you really enjoyed it. And I'm sure that you saw, there's a lot of STEM programs going on throughout the 4H program, which are going on throughout the state, which are being implemented through the State Fair Association coming from Harrisburg. So those programs are not just coming from the schools, it's coming from other organizations implementing it also. Some projects they had at the fair this past year, they had Lego building contests using STEM ideas, different woodworking contests. And previous years, they had Lego building contests sponsored by, he wasn't hiding. I think it was Chevron. I think Chevron sponsored that program. Yeah. But if there's any way that the school board here in Latrobe, which is very close to the fair, could work with some kind of, any service program for the teachers to implement some kind of eder cultural education would be awesome. I know at Latrobe Elementary School, I believe their first grade kindergarten goes to the Friday forum. Kindergarten goes to Friday for every year. And they'll be pleased to know that they'll be implementing their cheese factory, starting up in a couple weeks, which the students from LES will be able to see the actual process of cheese being made. And that's something that a lot of students, even in Latrobe, do not have in their education. And it's a vital part of their education to know where the food comes from, to know what to look for, and just to have a know-for-all what's out in any of the environments. So if, any way we can talk about it, there's somewhere else some ideas, I'm open to it, I can talk to you guys. Mr. Preppica has my contact information with his email, so does Mr. Miras, so does Mr. Heidi. I'm, I have a lot of connections with the fair board. I'm a former fair board director, so there's a lot, there's a lot of men on the board who don't have the, trying to say, state politically correct, the know-how to approach this topic and the subject to work with people in this capacity. So if they're looking for help to try and implement programs like this. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Perunka has a follow-up.
Has a follow-up to Mr. Prister's comments about our kindergarten, LES kindergarten going to the Friday forum. It's my understanding that there's a great possibility that the Secretary of Agriculture from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania will be present during that field trip that they take to the Friday forum. So it's something that they're working toward, trying to incorporate Mr. Rogers' day into that field trip as well. So not only are you gonna get to see the new cheese factory, you're gonna get to meet somebody important from the state, and I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you, sounds like a good idea. I'm just gonna throw in my two stats about that hand washing. Everybody's excited about the coronavirus, but honestly, the biggest thing anybody could do is to wash their hands. Believe it or not, the biggest infection control thing that I was involved with at the hospital when I was still working was hand washing. And you can't even believe how many people in the hospital would wash their hands. It's really kinda disheartening, but hand washing really is a big contributor to controlling these kinds of diseases. We talk about washing our hands for 20 seconds. We have my grandchild singing the ABC song, which is 20 seconds long. He sings the song from ABC all the way down to the end of it. And if anybody knows what the last verse of the ABC song is, you wash your hands for 20 seconds while you're singing the ABC song. Put a lemon on paper, stand and sing, sing the ABC song. So that's just a very simple thing that people can do to help prevent this kind of stuff. Sneezing into your arm, covering your mouth when you cough, you stay home when you're sick. Anybody else have anything to say?
Yeah, I do, Dr. George. I wanna thank and congratulate Dr. Pepper and all of the administrators on their efforts in creating that video, introducing themselves to our community and to persons who are looking to possibly buy a home in our area. I, I think that would help people when they're trying to make a decision as to whether or not this is where they wanna send their kids. So I congratulate you and I thank you for your efforts, all of you. Thank you.
Any else? I thought I made the resolution 193, a German. Holes in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Have a good night.